All right, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the ceremony of the Warden's election. My name is Tyler Sager and I'm a clerk for the County of Perth. Until the County Council has elected a new Warden, I will be acting as the Chair for this meeting. I would now like to call the meeting to order. On to 2.0 of the agenda, moment of reflection. So if everybody could please join me for a moment of reflection, please. Perfect. From amongst these individuals, council elects one of its members annually to serve as the Warden. The Warden serves as the Head of Council and the Chief Executive Officer for the County of Perth and has specific legislative procedural duties and responsibilities to fulfill within the role as defined in Section 225 of the Municipal Act 2001 RSO. With such responsibilities, the Head of Council has a prominent and highly public profile. The citizens that we serve have high and sometimes varied expectations for their Head of Council. Part of the role of the Warden is to find a way to balance these expectations while also being mindful of the decisions of the municipality are made by council as a whole. Now, similar to last year, the current situation does not permit a reception being held immediately following the election. So we appreciate everyone joining us today online via our YouTube channel. After a brief recess, we will proceed with the regular council meeting. We're going to move on to greetings from our invited guests. And first up, we have MP John Nader. So we're going to move John Nader from an attendee into a panelist. Good morning, John.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Members of Council, Warden Acheson, Deputy Warden Rhonda Egits. It's a pleasure to join you this morning virtually from Ottawa. It's nice to see everyone's face on the screen and to renew acquaintances this morning. I want to begin by thanking and congratulating Warden Jim Acheson on his past two years as Warden and wish him well as well. I understand that he will be once again continuing as Warden for 2022 in what promises to be an equally exciting year ahead. I do know that these past couple of years have been challenging, not only for County Council, but certainly for the Member Municipalities as well. And under your leadership here at County Council and each of your leaderships at your Member Municipalities, I know you've persevered and pivoted with that infamous word as things have changed and evolved. And certainly 2022 will, certainly we all hope will be closer to a return to normal to provide Warden Acheson with at least part of a normal year as Warden. And I think we all hope that going forward. As always, my door, both virtually and in person, is always open. So if there's anything that I can be of assistance with, either to the county or to one of your Member Municipalities, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'm happy to assist in any way I can, whether it's an endorsement for a funding application or grant application or just an opportunity to share ideas. I'm always available. So I will leave it at that. I know you have a heavy agenda this morning, but I do just want to wish you all well going forward. As we approach the Christmas season, I want to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and all the very best for 2022. Thank you so much.
John? All right, we're going to move on to greetings from Deputy Mayor Margaret Ritzma for City of Stratford. And we're going to try and move them into a panelist role. All right. The joys of technology.
At least the internet hasn't gone down yet this morning.
Yeah, we'll try Mayor Al Strathen, see if we could get Alan.
Good morning, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you excellent, thank you.
All right, good morning. I bring greetings on behalf of the Town of St. Mary's. It's my pleasure to go before the City of Stratford. Actually, I think that's a welcoming change, actually. I'd like to congratulate, I'd like to congratulate Warden Acheson and Deputy Warden Rhonda Egits for their leadership and thank them for their cooperation during the pandemic. It's been a tough time for all of us. And quite frankly, I miss the camaraderie and the sandwiches that we usually experience at this event. But Laurie assures me that Jim isn't testing his marriage by taking this role on again and we're looking for his leadership. The reality is that we know that both Jim and Rhonda are very committed to the county and we appreciate the cooperation and the spirit of cooperation during these difficult times. And I think that everything's in good hands for the election today. And thank you, everyone, and good luck going forward. It's been a long year, but everyone on County Council, I think you should congratulate for getting through this. You've shown great leadership towards your residents and we're all appreciative. So thank you very much and we'll see you all soon, hopefully for sandwiches and coffee.
Thanks, Mayor Strathen. All right, moving on to the next, instead of using technology, just like that, Deputy Mayor Margaret Ritzma is here in person.
Well, if I may, I assumed I was on. I put in my name to be on for technology this morning and I cheated and I saw two individuals. That's Kassenberg and I and I thought, I guess I'm in live. So I hustled over. So certainly it is my absolute pleasure to bring greetings on behalf of Mayor Dan Matheson and Stratford City Council. And I want to certainly extend my thanks, our thanks, to Warden Acheson for his work. And just catching the tail end of the last comments, certainly these have been trying months, but the leadership has been outstanding during this COVID. We certainly appreciate your work with regard to the equity inclusivity piece. That is so important that we are partnering with that leadership and your commitment to our local residents and those in Perth County. Warden Acheson deeply appreciated. And so our thanks and we look forward to ongoing partnership as we move forward with the City of Stratford and Perth County. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you, it's your turn. Moving on in the agenda, we do have the introduction of past Wardens. I'm going to call on Councilor McKenzie to introduce the past Wardens on behalf of the Past Wardens Association. At this time, I'm going to ask Sean McCoy to put up some slides as well for viewers.
Okay, thank you. And good morning, everybody. So it's my honor to introduce past Wardens, even though they're not here in person. I am sure they're here in spirit. And I'm filling in for the President of the Past Wardens Association, Bert Borstenbach. Before I start with the list, I would just like to make mention that we lost two past Wardens this past year. Mert Snyder, who was Warden in 2016 and 17, and Dave Shear, who was Warden in 1998, 99, and 2000. So we certainly are going to miss those individuals. So my list of remaining past Wardens, we go back all the way to 1982. And Tyler says that's before his time. So anyways, in 1982, the Warden was Elsie Cargus from Listowel. And 1987, Jim Spence, who is also from Listowel, but at that particular time, he was the Reeve of Mitchell. Amos Gerber was Warden in 1988. And then we jump to 1991, and that was Bert Borstenbach. 1992 is Vince Judge from Listowel. And there's some names that keep recirculating up throughout the years. In 1993, Bob McTavish from Northeast Hope. And then 1995 was my first crack at being Warden. In 1996, John Van Beekel from Logan Township. And then in 2001, right after amalgamation, again, we have Vince Judge from Mount North Perth. And then in 2003, Annabelle Thompson was Warden from Perth South. In 2006, Barb McLean from West Perth was the Warden. And then 2007 and 2008, Ron McKay, also from Perth South. And then 2009, 2010, and 2011 was Warden Julie Behrens from North Perth as well. In 2012, Ian Forrest was Warden from Perth East. And then in 2013, we have Vince Judge again. And in 2014 and 2015, Bob Wilhelm from Perth South. And then in 2018 and 19 was myself from West Perth. And then we have 2020 and 2021 is Jim Acheson from Perth South. And we welcome him for the third goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, thank you, Councilor McKenzie. Moving on in the agenda, we have the candidate's declaration of intent. So past practice in Perth County is that for those who intend to seek the position of Warden, shall declare their intention at a County Council meeting in November. Accordingly, the Members of Council of Orkville at the November 4th, 2021 regular meeting, James Jim Acheson has declared his intention to seek the position of Warden. Understanding that there is only one candidate, I'll move on with the declaration of the Warden. So at this time, I'm going to do the declaration. If you could take the piece over there.
Sure. Well, thank you. I, Jim Acheson, have been elected to the Office of Warden in the County of Perth. Do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received or will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. And I make this solemn promise and declaration consciously, believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as made under oath.
Thank you. So in accordance with the County of Perth Procedure by law, I declare James Jim Acheson as the Warden of the County of Perth for the year 2021, 2022. Moving on to the election of the Deputy Warden, those who intended to seek the position of Deputy Warden also declared their intention at the County Council meeting in November. Accordingly, the Members of Council of Orkville in the meeting or at the meeting of November 4th, 2021, regular meeting, Rhonda Egits has declared her intention to seek the position of Deputy Warden. And understanding that there's only one candidate, I can move forward with the declaration of Deputy Warden. At this time, Rhonda, if you could please.
I, Rhonda Egits, having been elected to the Office of Deputy Warden in the County of Perth, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly and faithfully and partially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Thank you. So in accordance with the County of Perth Procedure by law, I declare Councilor Rhonda Egits as the Deputy Warden of the County of Perth for the year 2021, 2022. So if everyone, please can congratulate our 2021, 2022 Warden Jim Acheson and Deputy Warden Rhonda Egits. We'll move on now to the presentation of the gavel and chain of office. This is going to be a little bit different in these circumstances.
It's like a rain toss. Got to get my mask on here. I said I missed this in last year. Should have used this a couple of times.
Thank you. So as I present the chain of office and the gavel, the Warden Jim Acheson, I will now hand the floor over to Warden Acheson. If you'd like to give remarks at this time, please do so.
Okay, well, thank you very much, everyone. I think Mary Al Strathen, he said it best. It's been a long year. And, you know, Deputy Mayor Margaret Ritzma kind of reiterated the same. I'm going to be honest with you. At the start of this year, when the numbers were going through the roof, I was thinking, God, this job can end anytime soon. And then things got a little better and we made some good accomplishments in the county. And I made the comment when we were making declarations, I'd like to have kind of a normal year. Past Warden McKenzie and Mayor of Perth West said, yeah, wishful thinking, Jim. And that was a month ago. We had 300 roughly cases in a car of COVID. Now we're close to 1,000 mostly on any given day. So it is going to present some challenges going forward in this. At least until the winter time's over, there's no doubt about it. But looking back over the last year, I'm actually very happy and proud of what we've accomplished in the County of Perth despite COVID. We've got a lot of things done. We've dealt with our premises issues, our transportation systems up and humming along. And if we could get rid of COVID, it would just be running along tickety-boo because I know there's going to be some demand once we can get away from COVID. We've done different things. We've got our inclusion thing finished off finally. We've got the official plan that we've been working on. And albeit, I'm a little disappointed we aren't a little further along, but staff can only do so much with the amount of resources they have. We have kind of taken care of that issue. We've got a person on board to help get that finished up in the coming year. I'm really looking forward to having that wrapped up by the end of the year, I've got to be honest with it. Our Economic Development Department's done some great things in the last year for us and continues to do great things for us. And overall, I would just really, really like to thank staff for their cooperation and everything they've done in the last year. It's been somewhat challenging at times. It takes us longer to get things done because of COVID, but we've got them done. And being a self-employed businessperson, to me, sometimes it's like watching paint dry and I struggle with that. But because I like to do things now and let's get at it. But no, I do appreciate staff for what they've accomplished in the last year and all the dedication they give in the county and support they've given me. And then last but not least, I'd like to thank council for their support over this past year. I know there's different times we haven't all agreed, but that's democracy. And that's what makes the world go around. And, you know, once it's all said and done, everybody's on board and away we go. And I'm really looking forward to this next year because God forbid, we're not going to have official plan finalized by the end of my term. There's a few other little things we want to work on. But I'm looking forward to this year. And I can pretty well guarantee you that'll be enough to pretty well finish me off. Anyway, I do appreciate the support and look forward to moving on this coming year. Anyway, that's, but I don't do prepared speeches, so there you go.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to move on to the Perth County History Exhibit. We do have some remarks from MPP Randy Pettis, but his schedule is not allowing him to show up at this time. So we will just move him further on into the agenda. So Sir Franklin, and we'll bring in Betty Jo Felton from the Archives.
Wonderful, thank you very much, Tyler. Through the newly elected Warden, good morning, Warden Acheson and Members of Council, past Wardens, staff and guests. I'm really pleased to co-present this report to you today with my colleague Betty Jo, who will be joining us remotely. She's our manager of Archives Services and Archivists. The Courthouse History Exhibit was created in celebration of this year's Warden's election. And the exhibit consists of eight poster panels that feature a variety of archival photos and historic details relating to the courthouse building and the history of County Council. And these have been installed on the lower level of the courthouse located at 1 Huron Street in Stratford. I'm now, at this time, going to turn the presentation over to Betty Jo, who I sees up on the screen. And Sean, if you wouldn't mind sharing the images, Betty Jo's going to walk us through some of the panels.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Congratulations to the Warden and Deputy Warden, and thank you, Sarah. I'm delighted to be able to walk you through these posters. As Sarah mentioned, they're recently installed in the Level 1 hallway at the courthouse. You have copies of the posters in your agenda package and Sean's going to scroll through them on the screen as well. You'll notice at the bottom of each of the posters, there's a QR code which links to the Archives section of the county website. These posters are all there on the website along with even more photographs and historical information about Perth County. So for example, there's a list of every Warden since the 1850s. I'd like to thank Jen Giorgio, our Archives Technician for cataloging and digitization, for creating the online version of the exhibit. And she and I have had great support from Sarah throughout this project and wish to thank her as well. So this first poster is an overview of the history of council. Next, Sean, if we could move along to the next one? Thank you. There's information about how council operates today. And the next few posters look into the history of the Perth County courthouse. So if we just move to the next slide, thank you. And here you see the two photographs off to what is my left. You see the foundation for the courthouse being laid. And above that is a very early view of Ontario Street from the tower. On the next slide, there's information about the architect, George F. Durand. And then on the next slide, next, some of the features that visitors ask about most are described in detail, like the stained glass windows, the carved newel post in the grand staircase. And then next, the Superior Courtroom and the Law Library. And of course, next, there's the, some information about the terracotta panels on the outside of the building. People are fascinated with the courthouse, so we wanted to give them information about it, should they be visiting in person or have a virtual tour accessible from anywhere in the county as well as around the world. So thank you. And now for the next two slides, I'll turn things back over to Sarah.
Great, thank you, Betty Jo. So in this last panel, we wanted to celebrate the preservation efforts that have taken place to really take care of this architectural gem and the stewardship that has been shown by past council members to modernize the facility in recent years as well as preserve some of the historic features. So you can see some great photos that the Archives has supplied of those efforts. And before I conclude, I think one of the things I can say speaking as somebody who works in this building, we do get a lot of questions about the features. So this will be kind of a welcome addition to our facility to really showcase our history as Perth County, not only of council and their role, but also of this magnificent building that we have in our care. Also as well, I'd be remiss if I didn't also thank the collaborative efforts of everyone who worked on this project. Aside from myself and Betty Jo, the entire Archives team assisted. Cindy Cinco and Ellen Thomas did a lot of research and photo scanning. As Betty Jo has mentioned, Jen Giorgio has helped to set up the companion website that you can scan at each panel and pull up even more detailed information we weren't able to set up on these posters. Nick Larson from Facilities, who carefully guided me through the building so I could snap some of the photos of some areas that the public doesn't always get to see. And also Gary White from GIS for providing the modern map of Perth County. And that's everything we have for you today. Well, happy to answer any questions. This is an image just before we leave off what the county, the exhibit looks like on the lower level at this time.
Questions for Sarah or Betty Jo? I see Councilor Hurley's hand go up there.
Oh, great, thanks, guys. That's amazing. Somebody putting themselves into those scriptures and such. It's amazing what's embedded into these walls and, you know, the hand of protection and such. It's interesting. And well, I greatly appreciate the work with the terracotta emblems and moats. It's beautiful. So, well, thanks, it's a lot of work, but it's nice. It's good that we keep that richness and highlight it. Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments for staff? Not seeing any hands go up. I do need a resolution to accept the report as presented by Sarah and Betty Jo, by Councilor Kellum, second by Councilor Hurley. Those in favor, that's carried. And I've just been informed Randy's got freed up, so. Well, Randy on the screen here. Oh, there he is, sort of. Oh, there we go. Morning, Randy.
Good morning. Sorry, I'm late here. And just as I got on, the phone rings and whatever else. So, but anyway, good seeing you guys this morning and on this warm, what seems like a spring day. But it looks like the weather, we're going to get, we're going to get back to reality pretty soon. So anyways, and I'm honored to bring you greetings from my basement this morning. So as the County Council prepares for the new season, I want to recognize all of council and your dedicated staff. And I continue to enjoy working with all of you. I want to pay tribute to Warden Jim Acheson for his service as Warden. He should be proud of his service and we thank him for representing us. Thank you as well to Rhonda Egits for her service as Deputy Warden. And I want to continue to do everything I can to advance the county's issues with the provincial government. I really, I rely not only on the advice of the Warden, but on the advice of all County Councilors and how best to serve our mutual constituents. So I want to, on behalf of the province of Ontario, I want to congratulate the new Warden and Deputy Warden. And again, thank you so much and best wishes in the next years. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. That pretty well concludes the Warden's election. So we just need a motion to adjourn, I believe. Councilor Deputy Warden Egits and second by Councilor Wilhelm. Those in favor. And that would be carried. So we'll need to take a, how many minutes? Five minute break, five to 10 minute break because you guys are going to have to log off and get on the next connection. Before I proceed, if you could just turn off your videos as well as keep your lights muted, it's the same Zoom we'll be using. We're going to be putting up a screen saying that we'll be moving into regular council charting. So just turn off your videos and mute your lights and we'll be back in five to 10.
We're going to be putting up a screen saying that we'll be moving into regular council sharing, so just turn off your videos and mute your lights, and we'll be back in five to 10. All right, we're going to stop sharing the screen right now. What we're going to do is a picture opportunity with the rest of council. So if everybody can bring their videos up, that'd be great. And then we'll have the rest of council that's here in person go to the front of the room, we'll take a picture, so. So if everybody just gets their video up, that'd be great.
And if everybody masks up and go to the front. And we should have Laurie in this as well, perhaps?
Sure, I think whoever.
This is our annual photo.
You gotta make it work, right?
You guys can get cozy. Your mask.
Mask bandery.
We're about to make a little space. Counselor McDermott, are you available?
He's at work.
He is at work, yeah. Perfect, excellent, so if we could just have everybody look at their camera and give a nice big smile, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. One, two, three. Okay, let's try one more, I'm going to zoom out a little bit. Okay. One, two, three. Try and dim it a little bit so I can get, okay, thank you.
The regular meeting fired up? Perfect, okay. We're back at it, we're going to fire up our regular meeting here. So I'm going to call it to order at, what time is it?
Nine forty-three.
Nine forty-three. Okay, first, we'll start with a moment of reflection. Thank you, okay, at this point, you can make a disclosure of peculiar interest, or you can do it at any point in time through the meeting should one arise. And then I have a motion to confirm the agenda, we have no additions, deletions, none at this time. Okay, Counselor Kellum.
Move it.
Okay, Counselor Kellum would move, we approve the agenda, seconded by Counselor Willhun. Those in favor, that's carried. Okay, we're going to move on to consent agenda. And we have items five point one to five point six, and we have the November eighteenth, twenty-one council minutes. Anybody want to see anything pulled or discussed? Not seeing any hands, so I have a motion, the council receives a consent agenda, items five point one to five point six, and approves the November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one council minutes. Moved by Counselor Casenberg, seconded by Counselor McKenzie, your hand went up over there, didn't it? Perfect, those in favor, that's carried. Thank you very much, now we're going to move on to the public meetings, hearings, and delegations, and we have Patrick Arndstrom from Hasser here. They pronounce that correctly, Hasser?
Please, sir.
Hazar.
Yes, I am, Warden, thank you for having me.
Perfect, oh, there he is. Got to kind of scut around the screen to find you, we're all ready to hear your presentation.
Okay, I'm just going to go to PowerPoint quick, if that's okay?
Yep.
So, Warden and council, thank you for having me, I represent here on An area search and rescue. And we just want to give an update from our creation in two thousand and eighteen until today. We are self-funded, and municipality money is integral to our organization. In two thousand and eighteen, we created not-for-profit here on An area search and rescue, which does cover Perth County. We cover off searches for missing and lost persons, rope swift water, ice rescue. We do have two dogs being trained through the OPP civilian search dog program. We have a marine component with the Canadian Coast Guard Auxiliary, and we've been assisting with natural disasters such as the Ottawa flooding in two thousand and nineteen. We have a number of call-outs, as you can see. For Perth County, we were called out the twelfth of August near Wortburg for a missing person. And during the pandemic, when a lot of the service groups had to kind of close down, we were actually stood up and worked with One Care through here on An Perth County in Stratford. And according to the Executive Director of One Care, we saved the Meals on Wheels program by donating five to eight volunteers per day, delivering twenty-one hundred meals. We've driven the circumference of the earth twice, and we were involved in three medical assists that saved lives. There is no formula to creating a search and rescue in Ontario. It's kind of, the twenty-six organizations are all separate. We modeled ours based on the police and fire platoon system, as they're the organizations that will call us out. Just some of our assets, we have our command post, which can do command, control, and communication for disasters, search and rescue, but also for community events. We have the trailer. We have an Argo that's been donated. We have a retired military vehicle that's dedicated to rope rescue, as well as our own vessel. Currently, we have sixty-three members, and I would say twenty-five percent of our members come from Perth County, mainly on your west side, however, we do have people throughout, including a couple from Milverton. And we maintain a good relationship with the fire departments and the OPP and Stratford Police as well. Our members are all branded, meaning that they all wear a gray uniform. We make sure that we do not look like first responders, as we are not first response. But we want to make sure that we look professional, and that our members all look similar, so people know who we are. I'm more than happy to take any questions, if anyone has any about our organization or our operations.
Hey, thank you, now if we can go back to non-shared screen, then I can see some faces. Perfect, any questions for Patrick on his presentation? Counselor Hurley.
No, really interesting, a great update, and it's nice to hear you helped out there with the Meals on Wheels. That's a very important program for us, and I'm glad you stepped in there, and that's excellent news.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll let our volunteers know, having done the program with Hazar is probably the most rewarding volunteer experience I've had in my life. With all the stuff I've done, it stood out over everything else. In some cases, especially in Stratford, in the Perth area, we were finding that we were these people's only social contact daily. And they got to know, so.
That's awesome, it just, really, that's amazing, although it's great news, there's so much suffering. A process in, anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Not seeing any hands go up, thanks, Patrick.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, I have a motion that council received, a presentation from Hazar for information. Moved by Deputy Warden Agus, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor, that's carried. Okay, we're going to move on, and next we have Meredith with the Perth County Tree I B R E project results. Hold up, get Meredith up on the screen here. We have a couple others joining. Morning, Meredith.
Good morning, Warden and County Council, thanks for having me.
Is Jordan coming up too?
Justin, Jordan, and Chris should all be on the screen right now.
Okay, they're not just quite all here yet, just give us a sec here, Meredith. We're getting closer. I think we got everybody now?
Is Justin up? I don't see Justin.
We have Justin yet. There he is, okay, just get completely connected. Eric, there's Justin, okay, now we're good to go.
Perfect, thank you, Warden and County Council. Perfect. Thank you, Warden and County Council. We're here today to present to you our triage business retention and expansion survey results. We've gathered the data and now have the final report and action items attached to your package today. As you have, I'm sure you've noted that our business community has identified the lack of housing, skilled and unskilled labor as their three major barriers. Today, we have Chris Bandak and Jordan Tidy from M D B Insights to present the results of our survey and action items. Myself, Justin Diaz, our Economic Development Officer, and Jordan and Chris will happily take questions after or during the presentation. So I'm gonna hand it over to Chris and Jordan now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Meredith. Thanks, Members of Council. Thanks, Warden. So, we conduct a triage study, and the methodology was developed because it's a scientific methodology that allows us to use a random sample approach in order to understand what it is that the business community needs. It's been a very successful program. We've done it for over eighty municipalities across Canada. Most municipalities are on their second or third iteration of the program because it provides such a precise set of initiatives that you can focus on to, to help the business community. In your specific case, it was a random sample completed mostly by telephone. We started with initial sample of one thousand four hundred and four numbers. Of course, that was pared down because some numbers are not in service, some are bad numbers, some businesses are out, are no longer running a business. So the sample file even came down even further to eleven sixty. And then there's even further dissemination from there because of lack of response, et cetera. So the net result is our response rate was sixteen point three percent, which is extremely high in the market research industry today. I think typical market research studies are anywhere in the area of one to two percent in terms of response rates. The, the net result is that we have a high level of accuracy with a margin of error of approximately seven point seven percent. That would be the maximum margin, margin of error with a ninety-five percent confidence interval, meaning that the results are repeatable nineteen times out of twenty. So we, we begin with looking at some business firmographic information, and, and again, we see some positive positive results coming here with ninety-five percent of your businesses being locally owned and operated, five percent being externally owned. Property ownership is at seventy-two percent. That's higher than most municipalities. Rent is at twenty-eight percent. So a lot of business owners actually owning their own buildings. And then when we look at years in operation, again, some very positive things. We see the majority, almost seventy percent, operating for more than ten years, which really points to a lot of stability. But yet, there's still some growth with, you know, twenty percent in the past one to five years and one percent in the past year. So we do, we start our quantitative measures with something we call business performance, and this looks at a host of things, including hiring and revenues. So we start off by asking over the past twelve months, you know, did the total number of your employees either increase, decrease, or remain the same? And you can see here, and this is, this is common across Canada right now, that decrease sort of outpaces increase when we think about the past twelve months. And that's gonna be an impact from COVID and from businesses trying to manage through the pandemic. The good news is that when we look forward to the next twelve months, the expectations are extremely positive, and we can see that most businesses, thirty-three percent, are looking to either increase the number of employees at their location or either stay the same, and very few, only two percent, are expecting to have a decrease in the number of employees. So this, this would be very positive in terms of outlook. Next, we look at revenues. So if we ask about over the past twelve months, have your revenues increased, decreased, or remain the same? Interesting result here. This is, this is slightly different than what we've seen in almost every other municipality over the past twelve months. You actually have a net increase for the past twelve months, meaning more businesses increased than decreased. So that looks positive. And then taking that a step further, when we ask about the next twelve months, you can see that fifty percent expect, again, higher revenues relative to the past twelve months, and only eight percent of the business community expecting lower revenues. And then we ask an attitudinal question. So we just wanna understand about their attitudes about doing business and whether over the past twelve months, they're more positive, more negative, or have they just remained the same? And again, we see that same sort of positive result with a net positive seven percent being more positive versus more negative, and eighty percent with no change at all. So again, if we take all of this together, we do what's called a business performance forecast. And that basically takes all of those metrics from those business performance questions that we just showed you, and we create one single metric. And this allows you to get a sense of whether the business community is sort of in an expansion mode, are they in a mode of stability? Or are you guys contracting in terms of growth and employees and revenue? And you can see, Perth has actually been the highest out of the past twelve triages that we've done with plus almost point two in terms of an expansion metric. So this is very good. Again, this really points to a lot of, you know, expected growth, positive attitudes, and hiring for the upcoming next twelve months. So, great result here. Part of this, this product as well, that's very important, is we have a K P I. And that's called the Key Performance Indicator, and we use this for several reasons. A, it helps to give a point-in-time measurement of where you are in terms of overall satisfaction for the business community. It also helps to become a benchmark moving forward. So if you want to re-measure your results in the future, you can see sort of have you improved, and, and we give you the roadmap for improvement by helping you understand what it is exactly that you need to do. In your specific case, again, extremely high metrics, like there's very few municipalities, regions or municipalities that hit this ninety-five percent level. So you have an overall K P I of ninety-five percent, meaning that when you combine very satisfied and somewhat satisfied, you have a total of ninety-five percent of your business community being there. This is an outstanding result. To make this even, you know, stronger, you have almost double the number of businesses in very satisfied versus somewhat satisfied. So the great news is, you're doing very well. The question becomes, going forward, it is going to be difficult to move the bar because you're already at such a high level. But it, but the goal should be either to stay the same or get better. The other goal could be perhaps to maybe move some people from somewhat satisfied into very satisfied. But overall, just, just an incredibly high result. So your business community is very happy in terms of their satisfaction with owning and operating a business. Next slide, Jordan. Next, we ask about satisfaction levels for a bunch of factors of doing business, and you can see, you know, there's a wide range in satisfaction levels. So some of the things that you're doing very, very well or are very well are things like support from residents, which makes a lot of sense. If you have a very happy business community, obviously, they're being supported well by residents. The availability of professional services from other businesses, support from other businesses, municipal property tax, water availability, all these things are doing, doing very well. Where are the, where are the areas that need improvement? Well, it's things like availability of attainable housing options, very low at thirty-five percent. Unskilled and skilled labor, two areas that have been plaguing everywhere across Canada. It, you know, getting workforce is very difficult these days. Some public transportation options, again, we're up in the fifty-four percent range, but still kind of an area that, that might need some help. So what do we do? We put this all together, and we do what's called, what's the next slide, Jordan? Thanks. Derived importance. And we do a priority matrix. So just to sort of demonstrate, we created this, this visual animation to help you understand how we, how we get importance. So we don't actually ask what's important. We try and get at the subconscious level and understand what's important by doing a correlation analysis. So this example tries to explain that. And so if we look at one of the business factors, availability of commercial and industrial property, again, these are fictitious. This is just to sort of demonstrate a point. But if you look at the industrial property variable or factor, you can see that as satisfaction levels increase and decrease, it has a huge impact on the K P I. Conversely, if you look at cellphone service, you'll see that as satisfaction levels increase and decrease, it has a small impact on K P I. So cellphone service would be considered to be not very important, and availability of commercial and industrial property would be considered to be very important because of its effect on the K P I. So we use this in order to create a priority matrix, which you'll see in this slide. And the priority matrix is calculated by taking the importance level and multiplying it by the room for improvement. So factors where satisfaction scores are lower, or there's lots of room for improvement, and are also important, go to the highest level of the priority rank. So you can see here, some of your top priorities are availability of attainable housing. So not only were your satisfaction scores lower, but these things are very important to the business community. Availability of skilled labor, availability of unskilled labor, availability of commercial and industrial property for purchase or lease. These are on the top list of what, what you should be focusing on. And if you focus on these items and you make improvements, you're going to see improvements in the K P I over time because these are what's driving people's satisfaction. And again, you would approach this, it's not critical that you work on item one, it's not critical that you work on item two. The way you look at this is, where are the places that we can make changes? And let's work on those areas that have the highest priority, where we know we can make a difference. Some items might be difficult to change, some might be communication issues. This is something that you have to work strategically internally to determine where you wanna focus your efforts and what you wanna make changes to. But at least you have a very, very clear set of precise priorities that allow you to understand what's gonna have the biggest impact to the business community. And then as a, as a further measure, Jordan, I don't know if you wanna talk to the, the red and green flags?
Sure. So, you know, and, and thank Chris. So the, the earlier sections are all about understanding, you know, what are the things that are impacting satisfaction the most, getting understanding that business community. This section here, when we start with our red flags and our green flags, this is really diving into, okay, who exactly needs help and what sort of help do they need? So in this case, you know, there were forty-five businesses that indicated that they're looking to expand within the next year, or sorry, within the next twenty-four months. So it's one of those big, it's one of those big opportunities for the B R E team when they reach out and they have conversations with the business community. These are the ones that you wanna reach out to as part of that action plan that we'll get to down the line. And then we had twenty-three businesses that are considering relocating, downsizing, selling, or closing. So these, and these businesses are all identified, flagged, and then their individual responses catalogued within the, the follow-up data, so that when, when your team goes out there and has those conversations with those businesses, they can say, all right, we understand you're looking at expanding, but we also understand that you're having some difficulty with accessing skilled or unskilled labor. So they can come to that meeting pre-armed with the supports that currently exist that they can connect them with. And then all of that speaks to improving those, that K P I and those specific issues of business satisfaction, because they're getting the really targeted support they need, and they're reaching out to the targeted businesses that need that support at that time. And essentially, you can see in terms, in terms of this slide, the timeline on some of these things. So we can see out of that group of expanding businesses, that forty-five, we see that ten of them are within the next six months. So then, as part of our action plan, we recommend reaching out to those businesses that are looking to expand within the next six months first, just because it makes sense. Get out there while they need the support right now. Because so much of what comes, so much of what business retention expansion is, is connecting with businesses at the right time, like when they actually need that support, and then how, and, and being able to support them right then and there. So then I'll dive into the action plan. So essentially, what we did is we took all of the data from what we'd heard from the business community and their plans, and we developed essentially a, a, a four quadrant response plan. So one of the, the first quadrant on the top left there is support locally-owned businesses. And the reason we included that is, you know, based on your business community, we've got lots of businesses who, you know, have been in business for more than ten years, they own their business properties, they're not, many of them are between one and five employees. So we've got this really great group of businesses that are deeply entrenched within your community that could really, typically, when it comes to smaller businesses, they don't necessarily have the time or the ability to do things like invest in technology or to get access to different types of programming. So that's why we have that sort of one of our first quadrants in terms of supporting those locally-owned businesses. The second quadrant on the top right is business response, right? B R E response. So exactly what I was talking about previously, make sure we're reaching out to those businesses that are planning to expand, that perhaps there's something in their way, that there's something we can do to support them. And the same thing when it comes to our red flag businesses, if they're looking to sell, relocate, you know, can we help them with a succession plan? Can we help them get connected to a program that could retain them within the community? What are the ways to go ahead and do that? As mentioned previously, you know, the issue, in the, in the, in terms of the satisfaction levels, if you take a look at the bottom of the quadrant, you know, workforce, housing, transportation, those are the things that are sort of coming to the top of the list, and they're all, they're all very much workforce-related, like the, you know, the transportation issue is typically tied to the ability to have workforce to get to the location. Housing is all about related, housing is all about how much housing is there to support the workforce that they require. So really, we understand that that's the issue in a few specific areas that, that need to be really actioned. And then the last section, of course, on the other corner, is identifying and approving areas of municipal support. So making sure that when we're going out and talking to these businesses and connecting them to the existing programs, finding out where the gaps are, where there's, where there's, where's their programming that's not being supportive of them, and how to sort of fill that gap through municipal support. So make sure we're identifying and moving those steps forward. If we take a look at the, the immediate B R E ballot, so, you know, I, I understand, it, it, it sounds pretty obvious at this stage, right? But it's, you know, follow up with those flags, get out there and have those meetings. You know, we have also suggested implementing a CRM K P I tracking, so that's a client relationship management tool where you're able to track all of your interactions with the individual businesses, and then that allows you to track how you've been able to support them, you know, how many of them, for example, have added new jobs or new investment dollars. You're just making sure that we're tracking that system. It's a, a B R E best practice. And then the last one is, again, as we mentioned previously, you know, following up on that workforce, housing, and transportation issue. So see if there are some things that currently exist that we can connect them to, to sort of move the needle on those issues, because it, from the data we've seen, these seem to be the things that are stopping them from, from moving on, from expanding, from getting to that next stage. And then a little further on, so, you know, exploring supports for housing building upgrades, you know, potentially expanding agribusiness support programming, and then support an inventory of commercial industrial properties to assist with inquiries. So, you know, we could see that, you know, there are plenty of businesses that are looking to expand that own their property, so understanding what else is out there, so they can support those expansions is definitely a part of that. So that, that's where all these sort of things come together, and why we've suggested that these are the areas that the team reach out to and, and focus on in their, in their follow-up. And that's the, that's the end of the presentation.
Put it up for questions?
Thank you very much. A great report. If we can go get rid of the shared screen, then I can see some faces. That's better yet. Questions for our presenters? I'm sure there's gonna be some. Counselor Hurley, I see your hand first.
I know. That's an interesting compiled data. Very unique. How does this compare to, say, in like downtown Mississauga or something, you know, cooperation, food businesses and such? You know, is that similar, do you feel, you know, satisfaction of the area and, and support from the local? I'm just curious if you see that kind of collaboration getting along.
I, I don't unfortunately have specific data for downtown Mississauga. If, if I did, I could probably give you some sense, but I can tell you relative to the eighty other communities we've done across Canada, your data is very positive. In fact, I'd say on most key metrics, you're probably a little bit higher than most municipalities. And it's not easy to do, so a very, very positive result. That, that's the best I can do in sort of, in terms of giving you a direct comparison.
Okay, that's really unique, and yeah, you know, and as I've been in council, I've really, really understood and come to senses of new work of economic development engagement. During the pandemic, you know, a little bit of a rural area, you know, I've heard the comment, I don't care, take my money, I want to, you know, we need each other. But this is very unique. Thank you.
Deputy Warden.
Thank you for the report. It's great to see all the information. You talked about the flags, the green flags and the red flags and how you follow up. That's great information. I'm just wondering how you follow up with the red flag? Do you encourage them to stay, to try to find someone to buy their business? Or how, what do you do with, with some of the people that have the red flags?
Typically, we suggest it's just based on need, you know, because the idea that, you know, we've given those, we've given you the information to sort of start that conversation and then really understand specifically what their situation is. And I think that's sort of how that sort of flows into the next section. Sorry, I think I might have cut off Meredith, sorry.
Oh, no, that's perfect. Thank you. Thank you for that question, Deputy Warden Eggers. So out of the, to answer your question, we've already followed up with all of the businesses that have welcomed the opportunity to have conversations with us as red flag items. So, you know, it's been interesting speaking with one business that identified that they were downsizing. It's actually, they're just downsizing their physical location because their online presence from the programs that Ashley, our tourism officer, has been working with them, has grown exponentially. So they don't need the physical space anymore. They've done a pivot and changed their business model. So that's just one example of businesses that have, have been identified as a red flagged because they were downsizing. And then obviously, we plan on reaching out to all of the green flagged items before the end of the year. We're just getting through the list right now. We took it, we took it as a team priority to ensure that all of the businesses that had been flagged red, that we reached out immediately to them.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Casenberg?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and congratulations on your reelection. I found this report fascinating and I'm very grateful that we actually did invest in this. I think that we've learned a number of useful pieces of information. I want to assert one thing that I think is really important, and that is to sort of follow the logic flow. When you think about the sort of things that were identified as potential challenges that we face in our business community, and you start sort of working backwards by asking why, why, why? For each of the factors that we see, it strikes me that the answer continues to be the common denominator of housing and affordable housing. And when you look at the challenges faced with our businesses, and I invite any of my colleagues and the consultants to drive through the streets of Listowel, you see help wanted signs everywhere. And that's a function of a number of things. Certainly, the labor reliability issue is complex, and I don't want to oversimplify it. But I do want to make the point that housing is a significant, if not the root problem in all of this, that we absolutely need space for those workers who will fill those jobs that are being so advertised. And, and yes, like I said, there are other factors, quite convinced that we have a short, a soft skills deficit, although I hate that term, soft skills. But, and then factors beyond that. But nevertheless, if we can't house people here, and they have to drive from other communities or be brought here, then we have a significant challenge in terms of economic growth in our own area. And, and so we need to tackle the housing problem, and I know we are doing so, and I'm grateful for that. But I just want to point out that I think the, using the logic flow and asking why a few times takes you back to some very root fundamentals and that fits with Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Thanks.
Thank you. Other comments or Deputy Ward Nagets?
Just further to Counselor Casenberg's comments. Unfortunately, housing is everywhere. It's all over Ontario. You can drive anywhere in Ontario, and there's help wanted signs everywhere. So we're not unique to that problem, and I know we're trying to solve it. I think the government's going to step up now and help out with that problem, but I'm not just sure how we can solve it. Because it's everywhere.
Counselor Hurley?
No, it is an issue, and you do need to remember, I mean, if sometimes if government just steps off on a holistic approach, you know, we have a tremendous amount of people who are in the home, you know. And those homes are coming for sale, and you know, there's a lot of homes coming to the market in the next fifteen, twenty years. It should be, now how it's going to get handled or not, I wish there was some kind of cooperative, you know, where young families team up. And traditionally, that's where the church and the community, the local chapter would step in and help these people and, you know, take over the home. You know, the family unit, the community, there is a tremendous amount of people. And they're sending these babies sitting in these homes, and they're going to become available. And it's just a matter of, if we can house them, or if we have to put families in these homes to help out. And there is some programs talk, we could see that unfold, a little better cooperation. And that's something I'm wondering if, I don't know if we can talk on it at the county. And maybe Counselor Casenberg has heard similar. It's, it's very unique. It's going to be very busy in our seniors over the next twenty-three years. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Counselor Wright, I think your hand's up there.
Yes, guys, on your priority matrix, there's only certain things we can control, right? When you, when you filter this all out, it's great. And Derek like just thinks said, it's hard to hear him. We're talking twenty years for a lot of people to get out of their houses to be sold. It takes three to, three or four years probably to build an apartment. We've always said in Mitchell, I've been here twelve years, we'd like an apartment building built in Mitchell. We're, we're getting one, it got held up by LPAD for three years. Now we're getting one which is seniors apartment, should free up hopefully thirty or forty houses for that. But like, you have natural gas availability on here, that's one we can't control. We have two subdivisions, both, I'm going to call them higher density ones, held up by Enbridge not coming to put gas in the ground. Therefore, but there's so many outside mitigating factors to this. And we, we can't, as, sorry, municipal municipalities, force Enbridge to come and put, I sit where I am right now, there's, there's forty-six semis going up beside my house, but they can't start, it's been ready since June, no natural gas in the ground. How do we force or mitigate to try to get the job done? Like, there's no workforce out there right now. I just, I read your priority matrix, read it a couple of times, and some of the things in here, as a council, we can try to help out with. Maybe if Randy Pettipiece was still on the phone, we could maybe force Enbridge to come and put gas in the ground. But it's, it's a bigger, it's bigger than us. I'd like to know the businesses that are for sale, maybe I'd buy them. But, but there's other entrepreneurs out there who, you don't, people don't want to know that their business is for sale, but they want to sell it. It's a, it's a double edged sword there. You know, I have a couple, we all know what I do, and I can't say it because it'd be a flagrant foul of advertising here. But, but how do we get those six people that you were talking about to go through Meredith, to come to Doug to say, hey, here's a viable, we need a subway in Mitchell. How do we get that out there? On this priority matrix of getting, I just don't know how to say it, we need a restaurant. How do we, who do we attract? I can sit with Meredith all day. I go to Listowel, man, my, my men and my brothers are doing eight, framing eight houses in that subdivision across from theirs. They just came and told me to stop in and bring them donuts, someday for Todd. But the houses that are being built are still going to be five to six to seven hundred thousand. I don't know if you can build a three hundred thousand dollar home, a semi maybe four, but like the projects are getting held up on the higher density, lower price. I just scratched my head, wonder how we can forward them on.
Meredith?
Thank you, Counselor Wright, for that question and comments. So I think what we have done is we have kind of set it up as kind of two separate buckets. So there's the advocacy piece for natural gas, attainable housing, that really the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus is going to play in a very important role. And our members of council, talking to the federal and provincial governments. And that bucket is on advocacy, on the things, the items on our, that have been identified by our businesses that are really out of our control. We've taken all the items and issues that our businesses are facing that we can have some influence on, and we've added and included them into our work plan. So we are going to focus on trying to encourage and promote people attraction to Perth County. We are going to implement a CRM, and we are going to hopefully and continue to improve and address labor shortage through improved transportation. As restrictions lift, we're going to be able, hopefully be able to promote our transportation services and market them, you know, to the Kitchener Waterloo area as well as London, and hopefully start bringing more people into the area. So there are things that we can have an influence and an impact on. And then the other, the other, the other advocacy piece would be county council, our, our membership through the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, and, you know, working together with the Town of St. Mary's and the City of Stratford to push those, those pieces, those bigger pieces that are out of our hands forward.
Other comments or questions? Not seeing anyone. I'm going to make a couple of comments. It's kind of interesting. You brought up natural gas there, Counselor Wright. I had a call from a corporation here in the last week, it was a survey, it took me over an hour. And it was all about Enbridge Gas and how well they serve the communities and how well they corresponded with the communities. And I think every item I tipped less than satisfied or completely dissatisfied. And was all said and done, the person doing the survey said, she, she said, you sound negative towards Enbridge. I said, that's because we don't get service, we don't get correspondence, we really have no idea what they're thinking processes. So that was gone. She says, well, I won't identify you, but all this information was going on to Enbridge. So be interested to see what comes out of it, but like, I wasn't really happy with what's going on.
I haven't done it yet.
But I don't think anyone in this council is really happy with what's going on. And on the other hand, one of the questions in that survey was about planet change and use of natural gas. So you also got that side doing a little pushing against you as well. Another comment I'm going to make, I watched a real estate show on TV the other night, it was on housing and real estate. And the one common thing that almost any area is doing, and it's not that the municipality is starting it, it's the residents themselves. There are at least two families living in every house that's being purchased now in, I'll say, the Greater Toronto Area. And that's because of affordability. And what they're doing is they're trying to put two families in one house so they can get their feet in the ground. And hopefully at some point in time, real estate might correct, or they might be able to save enough money they don't own. But that's a thought process that I don't think's ever entered very few people's minds in the County of Perth. To be honest with you, everybody wants a single family house by themselves. But that's, you know, another way of perhaps attacking that problem. And it's interesting, and then Meredith and I had a long conversation the other day, skilled labor. It's lacking so bad, it isn't funny. And if you want any of these smaller businesses, a lot of them do require skilled labor, not just soft, soft skill like Counselor Casenberg is, but they need skilled labor. And the problem has just come up with the program, and they're hiring sixty-seven people to try and go around and promote that. But Meredith and Meredith, a nice discussion, like that's going to be four or five years before either that comes to fruition for benefit to our businesses. Unless something really drastically changes. Like I know some people have got through that programs quicker, but that was more because of the situation they were in or the people they were working with. And my son is a perfect example, like he was through that in no time, and he was off to the races. He's got two or three tickets. But, you know, not everybody has that opportunity. So that's one thing they're working on. And yeah, the housing, as Todd says, that is definitely an issue. And yes, the government says they're stepping up to the table. But I'm going to ask you all the same question, how many times have you heard that with no results? Let's hope that maybe this time you get some results, but that's just my comment on that. But it's definitely the issue. But back to that, maybe we do need to be putting, and we have bylaws that somewhat restrict two families in one home. In some municipalities, so maybe that's something we have to look at as well, in order to get over the hump. Because as Counselor Wright said, you're not putting up a bunch of apartments or buildings overnight. Anyway, great report. And I got one last question for Meredith before she gets off the screen, and I know it's not part of the presentation, but I do thank the people that worked with us on this, to give us this report, because it's great info. So I've had, I don't know how many emails and phone calls since yesterday on the BIR rail service time change. Is this something that this council would like to address, and maybe Meredith might have some comments on it? But we've got Meredith here, and I've got council here, and it's maybe the time to have the discussion. Counselor McKenzie?
Well, I was going to bring the issue up on your new business, but we brought it up. I, I think as a council, as a county council, we should probably tap into the rail. Like, it ties into our whole transportation package. We've got the buses coming into Stratford and going to Kitchener. But, you know, we talked about rail service to, you know, going to Toronto, one thing and another. And, you know, it's, it's only a month after we were all celebrating the GO trains coming to St. Mary's in London through Stratford. And now they're taking the BIR rail, but I think, and I'm not up to speed on this, but I think there's only one train a day coming out of Stratford, and they've delayed it now by a couple hours. So they're, they're making it almost unthinkable for people to take the train. If, you know, if you want to go to Toronto for a day trip, forget it, because I don't think the bus leaves till eleven-thirty, or their, or the bus, the train leaves until eleven-thirty or so, and you don't get into Toronto until one-thirty. So I, I think we should, you know, do some kind of lobbying or correspondence, that it's really unacceptable service to provide this area with.
Other comments from councils? Counselor Wilhelm?
I would agree with Counselor Kenzie. The, I thought the idea of the GO train was to improve service. And now VS as well is in, in my opinion, they're saying that now that you've got GO train, you don't need us, and we'll change it. And that's totally unacceptable. And perhaps we should partner with Stratford and make a very strong voice of our displeasure with the changes. And just arbitrarily change it and not discuss the results or the plan with the municipalities. Is not working as a partnership.
Other comments? Counselor Hurley?
When I, when I first read this and started looking into it myself as well, it just, it just continuously drives home the realization of why we have road infrastructure we do and such. Country, well, and stuff from coast to coast with rail, and roads just had to come. And so many were ripped out, we're just, you get unions in there fighting. And it's just, dependence on government gets difficult.
Other comments? I looked at the schedule late last night, because I hadn't had a chance to do that. I think the train arrives in Toronto around one-thirty, but the return trip's at four-thirty. You can hardly get there, go downtown to a nice steakhouse, have a steak, and get back in time to catch the train. It's completely useless in my estimation. Meredith, any comments?
Yes, actually, so Maggie has been working, Maggie, our transit coordinator, has been working quite closely with the City of Stratford, the Town of St. Mary's, and the municipality of North Perth on our transit program. So I do know that they are meeting later today or tomorrow to discuss, and I'll make sure that this item is on their agenda. And hopefully, they can work with the City of Stratford and Town of St. Mary's to advocate for better or improved service and better timing moving forward.
Perfect. So perhaps maybe they can discuss a joint response that might carry a little more weight. I see Stratford wasn't having much results, very much luck getting any feedback. Anyway, I got a motion here that Perth County Council receives the Perth County triage BRE project results report for information. I need to move her to second. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried, and we need a motion to, or just recommendation for staff to talk with the City of Stratford transit people and see what we can do for a response to view.
Through the warden, you can do that. Meredith has already indicated that she's going to have that discussion with Maggie. So they will discuss, and I'm through the chair, Meredith, I'm assuming that group will come back and, and report back to county council. So they will discuss and I'm um through the chair, Meredith, I'm assuming that group will come back and, and report back to county council?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. So we can wait till we get the report by. Yep. Very good. Well, thank you very much. Counselor or Warden McKenzie.
I, I'm not familiar with this whole situation, but I wonder if we should expand. We talk about Stratford and Saint Mary's, but a key player in this whole rail transportation, the city of London. And I'm not sure where VS starts. I assume it starts in Windsor or Sarnia or wherever it comes up through London and all the way. Like I just wonder if we shouldn't reach out to London and try and, and get them on site as well. That would be a very important player, I would think, in this whole. This whole uh train.
There are two roads.
I know. There's one goes to.
There's one goes from London directly through Woodstock onto Toronto and there's one that will come up through. Perth South and into Stratford and then out through Perth East onto Toronto. The Perth. Road per se has only had one train for a number of years. The other one, like there's people that will drive to Woodstock to catch train to go to Toronto. So.
I just still love her.
We can, we can, they can make that part of their meeting. Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on.
Thanks, everyone.
Something to bring up? Okay, next we're gonna have uh Betty Jo Archives. S C report for the sixteenth. We can get Betty Jo back up there. That's a really good report. Betty Jo, morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Warden. Okay. So um the report before you today, like the disaster prevention and response plan that council approved earlier this year. Uh the exhibit policy you're looking at now uh builds on the general preservation policy that was approved last year. The safest place for our collections is sitting on the shelf in the collections room, but that's not what they're for. So we have policies like this because besides being used by individual researchers. Collections can be used to inform and entertain visitors of public events. The goal of this policy is to keep them as safe as possible whenever that happens. It outlines the different kinds of exhibits that archives might create or support depending on the venue and the intended audience. Besides the gallery space at the archives building, original items might be displayed for a short term community event where that's appropriate. And if displaying original items is not practical, archives may opt to create poster style exhibits combined with information on the website. And the policy lays out how archives might loan original items to other cultural organizations for their exhibits to, again, just to make these items more available to the public. So I thank you for your time this morning and I'd be happy uh through you, Mr. Warden, to respond to any questions.
Okay, questions for Betty Jo on her report for the policy? Not seeing any. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the M S S C report for Stratford Perth Archives. Proposed Archives exhibit policy and that council approved the policy and the report for submission. To the M S S C meeting of December the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Moved by. Counselor Casper, seconded by Counselor Welln. Last chance for questions. Those in favor? It's carried. Thank you very much, Betty Jo. And we're moving on to P O A. Will we get moved up there? Morning Linda.
Good morning, Warden. Good morning, council. I have a very brief report for you. So I wrote this the day after our last M S S C meeting. So I've provided you with the fines collected, charges filed and distribution of revenue to the end of October. Most of our court appearances are still due in uh by Zoom. I have one verbal operational update. As of yesterday, I had a virtual meeting with the regional senior justice of peace. Who is responsible for scheduling everything. And she did give us permission to proceed with the ex parte trials. And with in-person trials as they're required by the defendants. We've obtained two additional blitz days to try to get through some of the cases. All of our dockets are full. And staff are working on scheduling the matters and getting things moving again. That's all the news I have for you for today. This is my report that I aim to give to M S S C on December sixteenth as well.
And we will look for questions from council or comments. Don't see any on the screen. I guess I got one quick comment. It looks to me like. I've noticed an increased irritation in drivers the last, and I looked at your revenues. And we're not that far behind nineteen and we still got two months to go. I'm thinking the fines must be larger than they were. Anyway, thank you, uh Linda. And I have a motion here that Perth County receives the P O A. Court Services Report for M S S C Report for Information. And Perth County Council approved the report for submission to M S S C meeting of December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Moved by. Deputy Warden Naget, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That would be carried. Moving on.
Thank you very much.
Next we have Corey. The, with our audit of financial statements. No, it's not gonna be Annette because Annette's on holidays because she's moving from Toronto to Stratford this week. Just so you know.
Chuck good weather today.
Uh yeah, I think she probably does her stuff moving in. It's just. Right. Morning Corey.
Good morning, Warden Agerson, and congratulations on your uh uh one year more term of uh warden. Um this uh report in front of you is to close a loop in relation to our audit from two thousand and twenty. I do not like the timing of this since uh we're almost the end of two thousand and twenty one. Um but in the draft statements, it, it does include the proportion consolidation of uh our local uh boards. Which is their long-term care facility of uh Spruce Lodge and as well as the newly uh amalgamated uh here on Perth Public Health. Couple highlights within the overall statements is uh Perth County at the end of two thousand and twenty had about a hundred and eleven million dollars. In that municipal position. Uh within that, um there is uh additional money going into the reserves. Of approximately two million dollars. Uh if you move on to the statements and we look at the uh statement of operations. You, to note, uh in comparison to the budget, uh revenues and expenditures uh uh were over budgeted by approximately about two million dollars. Uh highly related to uh COVID in relation to two thousand and twenty. Um you'll note as well is that we budgeted a surplus of uh about four million dollars. And we did show a surplus of about four point four million, which is an additional uh five hundred thousand. And to note, back in the year report, June of this year, we noted that the social services was under budget of half a million dollars. Uh uh so therefore our additional surplus overall. Um those are the main highlights. I'd like just to highlight on the statements. If there's any questions from council, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks Corey. Questions for, for your honor, our consolidated financial statement? Counselor Wilhelm?
Um I have two. Um the WSIB shortfall is somewhat concerning and also, and I looked here, I can't find it right now. On the uh notes from the health unit. It states that there was a three million dollar uh value of building contributed by Huron County. And it says nothing about the three million dollar building contributed by Perth Health Unit in the amalgamation. And I'd like to see that in the notes uh as well, that it shows that uh both health units contributed to building. And they were fairly close to equal value.
Uh yeah, we can uh include that in that um portion of the uh. Um statements. Uh it was just, I think it was in the understanding, it was that portion of it was already incorporated in the previous year's financials. Uh but I'll identify that in the notes uh as uh Counselor Wilhelm has identified.
Any comment to the WSIB shortfall?
Uh well, yes. So that is in relation to us being in schedule two. Um the shortfall and the increasing shortfall is, is essentially what we have in reserves. And over and above our accrued liability on it, that's above the reserves. Um so within the uh twenty twenty two budget as it comes up. Uh we're, we're looking at uh how we're going to try to deal with that shortfall.
Okey dokey. Other questions? Comments? Don't see any. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the two thousand and twenty. Audit consolidated financial statements report. And that council approves the consolidated financial statements for the fiscal year ended December thirty first, two thousand and twenty. Is audited by the firm B D O Canada L L E. Moved by. Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? And that would be carried. Thank you. And we're gonna move on. To paramedic services and Mike's come in. So Mike, take it away.
Thank you and for the warden. As I've asked him saying, congratulations to you and to Rhonda for uh the election. So this is our M S S C report. It serves both as an update to council, but also um we'll be going to M S S C later this month. And we're seeking approval to bring it to M S S C later this month. So there is some um. Uh information in here that you all have heard before and there are some news. So the first two items, which was mobile integrated health funding and the tiered response agreements. Uh had their own reports go forward to council previously. And so I'll just skip over those two. Uh violence against paramedics was an item that came up uh last year. And this is just reporting back to council that we've. Had an opportunity to uh continue to look at this through our health and safety committee uh throughout the year. And uh track any cases that may have uh uh come up with respect to that. And uh highlights a couple of things that we're uh that we're doing in terms of um. Um any uh type of uh violence that paramedics uh may experience. Over the course of their duties. And a couple of examples here that we've included is uh that we're working with our psychologists and support services. To make sure that we have a robust peer support team. And um we're able to uh respond to our responders um if they need any kind of help. We're also uh creating um a flow chart or we have that uh. Um helps us to know, um I helps us to, we actually had this in place previously, but um to know which, which homes um. Which addresses are flagged, uh where you may find uh certain individuals. Um and so we keep that in mind as well. Um working with. Um our health and safety committee to see if there's any other uh types of uh things that we can do. We've been working. Uh we put a poster in each of our ambulances, um which reminds clients that are in the ambulance that there's zero tolerance for violence as well. Um and um we're continuing with um. A mechanism for it so that staff can report if there are any cases to their supervisor. Of any kind of actual perceived violence that towards paramedics so that we can follow up uh using the appropriate channels. Whether that be through health, safety, or whether that be reporting through the police services. Um subsequently as well, um based on the letter that was sent um last year to the. Or to the uh Honorable David Minister of Justice, Attorney General Canada. Uh we've also echoed that uh. Letter as well and uh sent that information off to um the attorney general as well. So those are some of the things that we're doing with respect to that to close that loop. Um the ambulance service review is our certification. Uh process that happens once every uh three years. And we're in the process of doing that right now. We've provided, it's a modified certification at the moment. Because uh they won't come on site uh due to COVID. But what's happening is we send a whole bunch of data and information that they've requested. In the format they requested to them and uh the ministry has gone through those files. They've had an opportunity to ask some questions. And so. We have our exit interview actually tomorrow. Uh so we'll find out what the results of, with the preliminary results of that. Uh service review is uh tomorrow morning. Um the deployment review, the modernization plan deployment review, we've already discussed previously last council. Uh but that continues to, we continue to move forward and expect that the report will be uh coming before council in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty two. Uh cross border billing uh which is a topic that has uh crossed council historically in the past um. Is emerging uh right now because we have uh agreements with local municipalities. That basically creates uh an opportunity to invoice. The other county for whatever the net um level of services that we're providing to that county. In terms of uh crossing borders to do ambulance calls. So in other words, if, you know, the uh Oxford County does a hundred ambulance calls, but we do two hundred, then we would invoice them for one hundred. Ambulance calls. And that's historically what we've done in the past. We have agreements with only three, we had agreements with only three uh counties. And uh Middlesex London had withdrawn from that, withdrew from that for this year. So we have an agreement with Oxford County and Huron County. And we will be going, we are uh currently discussing what this might look like in two thousand and twenty two with those counties. Um right now with the modernization and deployment review with Oxford County, that will be part of it. So any recommendations we can certainly bring back to council. With respect to that, that will come out of that program. And uh we're waiting to hear from Huron County um what their uh. What, what uh they may be bringing forward to us in the very near future. I've had conversations with their paramedic chief. Um and then finally, uh COVID nineteen, uh just a little bit about that and where we're at. I think everyone's aware of where the provinces, Omicron and everything that's going on. And we're just predicting a slight increase in. Um the, the screen positives, meaning the, the, the patients that we come in contact with that we. Um either assume or that we know have COVID. And so there's uh a slight increase of uh. We're expecting a slight increase for November and December. And finally, I included a part or a little bit on our peer support team and some of the work that they've been doing this year. So since we brought in uh Brightwater, uh we've been collecting statistics and you can see uh some of those statistics there. Uh for reasons why our paramedics are accessing peer support, as well as the frequency of accessing those uh peer support, the peer support team. And so there's a little bit of information in that. Um and then from that, um and we will be continuing to invest in peer support next year as part of the business plan. You'll see that upcoming once those are submissions on. At your desks. And that, it concludes my report. So I open to any questions.
Questions for Mike on his uh EMS report? Not seeing any hands. Well, can't let you off that easy, Mike. Uh shared or cross border billing. You know, that's always been high on my crawl list. We've gone nowhere at the regional Waterloo over the years. Out of curiosity, why wouldn't funded Middlesex withdraw? Do we traditionally supply them more service than us?
We traditionally have, um and the, the amount of times um uh that were in their municipality are minimal. So I don't have the exact statistics in front of me here, um in front of me, but it was one of the lower impacts um to our service at this point. In terms of their, their staffing levels and services. So we do have a net. Situation where we have been providing more ambulances into their area than they do into ours. But at the end of the day, it was minimal impact to our service.
Unlike the regional Waterloo.
That um certainly historically has been the case. Um and more recently with their increase in staffing. We've also seen their reduction of um those calls. And one of the areas that we are actually gonna be looking at with the service review with. Um Oxford is the top stock area because there we actually service all of the code four calls. Um so we'll be looking at how do we best, you know, respond to residents. I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, of course. We um are here and we're funded through um Perth County and our uh shared services. Um but the challenge, of course, is that we. Um, but the challenge, of course, is that we want to provide a quick, robust service to all citizens, uh wherever they are closest to an ambulance when it's an emergency, right? So um, that is one of the questions that we're asking. Um, our, our uh our consultants to have a look at to see what do we need to do to address that situation? How can we best work with uh Oxford? But it's something to continue for us to monitor in terms of both Waterloo and London, how that impact may may uh move forward. And, you know, frankly, next year, I think um as we move into it and we open up the conversation and dialogue, it's something that we can visit and revisit and I'd be willing to with direction of council to have a look into um renewing or understanding how we might work with uh those other municipal partners that we contact and when we that we are moving across the border for. So it might be worth us having a look at in the upcoming months.
Okay, great answer. But just, and I realize when somebody needs an ambulance, they need an ambulance, and it doesn't really matter where it comes from. They need an ambulance. Yes, but over years, we tend to have subsidized regional Waterloo without any response and I guess as a counselor looking out for the benefit of my ratepayers, that somewhat does mutate. I guess that's the reason I brought that up again, good point. Yeah, but I also realized that someday that might be me that needs that ambulance. The way the roads been going this week. Bud only knows. That's a pretty serious accidents around the countryside. Anyway, I have a motion here. Anybody got any questions then or other comments for Mike? Uh, seen any, I have a motion Perth County Council receives the paramedic service municipal services shared report for December two thousand and twenty-one, and the Perth County Council approved the report for submission for distribution to the municipal shared services committee. Counselor Kellum moved seconded by Counselor Whitey. Those in favor? Let's carry. And public works. Now, does anybody want to take a five-minute break just to stretch? Before we carry on? Does that work for everybody? Seven-minute break. We're gonna stretch. And then we're gonna move on. Public work, we are getting that more towards the end.
Yep, okay, so we're back in business here. And next on the agenda is public works. And I see Bill Wilson's name up there and is that John? Two? We got John two or just Bill?
John was on.
There it is. Okay, morning, Bill.
Morning, Warden Herson.
And we're ready for your guys' reports.
Thank you, Warden Herson, and good morning, and congratulations to yourself and Deputy Warden Eggers on your recent reelection. We have a couple of reports in front of you relating to our department, and the first one being a boundary road agreement renewal between Perth County and Oxford County. This is a renewal of our existing agreement, and it covers off portions of Perth Line 26 and Perth Road 101, kind of east and west out of the limits of the town of Tavistock. And in addition to that, the agreement also covers off two sections that aren't actually boundary roads, but they are sections of roads that are maintained by Oxford County on our behalf. Not too much more to add to this report. If there's any questions, myself or John here on the report or the agreement itself, we're happy to take them.
Thanks, Bill. Questions for Bill on his boundary roads report? Not seeing any hands go up. Double checking. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the boundary road agreement. First slash Oxford report and the Perth County Council approved by law number 3846-2021 being a bylaw to authorize the entering into an execution of a boundary road agreement between the corporation of the county of Perth and the county of Oxford. Moved by Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor? Scary. Thanks, Bill. We're gonna move on.
Thank you.
And the next one, I just can't quite seem to get the page turned. I'm not sure if you're still doing that one or not, or is John?
Thank you, Warden Herson. I'm gonna handle the next two reports here. Good morning, council. Back in September, council and staff received correspondence concerning speeding on Perth Road 107 in Shakespeare. This report contains a fair bit of information pertaining to speed limits, community safety zones, and automated speed enforcement, which I hope you've all been able to review, but I'm only gonna highlight our findings and recommendations today. Perth Road 107 runs north-south through Shakespeare and is intersected by Highway 78, which is controlled by traffic signals. To the south of the highway, there's a 50-kilometer-hour speed zone approximately 500 meters in length with a traffic count of 5,200 vehicles per day. To the north, the 60-kilometer-hour speed zone approximately 300 meters in length has a traffic count of approximately 3,300 vehicles per day, and I provided a sketch in the report for your reference. The staff in the OPP have deployed our speed radar devices to ascertain vehicle speeds through Shakespeare on Perth Road 107. South of the highway in the 50-kilometer-hour speed zone, we found the average speed to be 50 kilometers per hour and an 85th percentile speed of 60 kilometers per hour. And this means that 85% of the vehicles are traveling at 60 kilometers per hour or lower. We would consider this data to be consistent with our other speed zones, and in fact, through Shakespeare, we probably see a greater observance of the reduced speed zone. To the north in the 60-kilometer-hour speed zone, we see average speeds of 58 kilometers per hour and an 85th percentile speed of 72 kilometers per hour. And again, we've considered this to reflect good observance of the reduced speed zone as we typically see 85th percentile speeds at 10 to 15 kilometers above the posted speed limit. At this time, we're not recommending any changes to the 50-kilometer-hour speed zone south of the highway. However, we are recommending to reduce the speed limit north of the highway from 60 kilometers an hour to 50 kilometers per hour, and this is to achieve consistency of speed limits throughout the village. And we're also recommending extending the speed zone to the north by an additional 125 meters, and this is to acknowledge a vertical curve or the geometry of the roadway and increase traffic and development at this end of Shakespeare. We are not recommending a community safety zone in Shakespeare as speed data suggests good observance of a speed reduction through and in the village. We have three community safety zones on county roads, and all three are in villages with a 60-kilometer-hour speed limit and are through roadways, meaning there are no stop controls in the speed zone. While we don't have a policy for community safety zones, the characteristics in Shakespeare, meaning the lower speed limit and traffic signals at the highway, are not consistent with our established community safety zones in St. Paul's, Kurzville, and Broadhagen. The report also outlines automated speed enforcement in Ontario. And the report goes into greater detail, but ASC is specific to school zones and community safety zones, and first and foremost, it's a road safety measure and not a revenue generator. Larger municipalities around the GTA have implemented ASC programs, but other municipalities near, closer to us are awaiting a provincial review of automated speed enforcement before proceeding. Of course, this review is delayed due to the pandemic, and we don't have a date yet when it will be provided. Information we've received from other municipalities indicates that the systems are quite expensive, can be a burden on POA staff, and further regulatory changes may be forthcoming pending the provincial review. Staff plan to keep updated on automated speed enforcement, but at this time, we're not recommending any further on the matter. Staff will also continue to work closely with our policing services on road safety issues, and we will include Shakespeare on our speed radar sign deployment program, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, John. Questions for John on this report? Counselor Hurley?
Oh, good. Thanks here, John. Bill, great report. It's, it's really interesting to see the partnership here in the technical, and it's good to see that for the most part, you know? We, we, we obey and we keep things in line. I'm glad to see this, and I think it's gonna be a pretty move. I've actually had a couple people on the north side in the last year, you know, questioning what we should do there. It's good to see this is moving, and you know, we're all imperfect and sinners in the performance of these vehicles nowadays. We can get caught and they're pretty zippy, so it's nice that we're adjusting this, and you know, signage is always the big thing, right? We, we always need to be reminded and know, great, I'm glad this is where it's at. We should hope that it reaches Shakespeare respects us. I'm sure they're gonna be thankful. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay, I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the Perth Road 107 slash Shakespeare's speed limits, community safety zone, an automatic speed enforcement report. And Perth County Council approves a maximum speed limit reduction of 60 kilometers to 50 kilometers on Perth Road 107, north of Line 34 within the village of Shakespeare, and the Perth County Council approved the extension of the speed limit zone on Perth Road 107 to a point approximately 430 meters north of Line 34 within the village of Shakespeare, and the Perth County Council approved by law 3845 slash 2021 being a bylaw to amend by law 2674 slash 2001 to designate speed limits on Perth County roads. I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Hurley, seconded by Deputy Warden Eggers. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? It's carried. So it's basically been 20 years since we set the speed limit there, so I guess it was time to address it. Okay, John, we're gonna move on. Five-year street renovation.
Great. Thank you, Warden Herson. Staff have been working for several years on possible solutions for staff accommodation within the facilities on the courthouse campus. There's, there's insufficient space within the courthouse to accommodate administrative staff, and that will further decrease once the courthouse elevator project is completed. Over the last 18 months, staff have been working with the consultant Mayhew to establish spatial, space requirements, service needs, and design solutions for the county administration. We currently lease additional office space at One Ontario Street for the planning department and economic development and tourism. That lease expires on June 30th, 2023. The lease at Five Hereon Street, which houses Service Ontario and Victim Witness Assistance Program, ends on December 31st, 2022. The timing of the two lease expiries presents an opportunity to accommodate staff. Staff have worked with Mayhew on a solution to accommodate by renovating the Five Hereon Street building and creating a connecting link expansion between the courthouse and Five Hereon. A high-level estimate for the entire project is just, just over $2 million, and the estimate for the renovation at about 1.5 million and 600,000 for the connecting link addition. Using the June 30th, 2023 lease expiry date for One Ontario, staff have worked backward to establish a project timeline to occupy Five Hereon by June of 2023. That timeline is considerably tight and assumes that both renovation and new construction happen concurrently. In order to meet the critical dates, it is recommended that the services of a design consultant be procured by the end of this year. Given the time constraints to occupy Five Hereon and Mayhew's familiarity with the project, staff are recommending to single-source the design phase of the Five Hereon Street renovation to Mayhew. This is covered under the county's procurement of goods and services policy and does require council. The project could be broken out into two phases, however. Phase one being the renovation of Five Hereon, and phase two, the new connecting link addition. The two phases can be done concurrently or separate. If we run both phases concurrently, there are more pros than cons. Certainly, we've got more control over design, construction schedule, access and coordination of both phases. However, we would need to immediately procure architectural services for phase two. If we're, if we do it separately, we most certainly will incur extra costs. However, council is not committing to the entire project at the outset and could counsel, could cancel the phase two connecting link condition altogether. However, if we are to do that, we would certainly need to consider this in the design phase for the renovation of Five Hereon, as we need to take into consideration access or temporary access and accessible washrooms. Procuring the architectural services for the connecting link addition can be handled differently depending on, depending on if it's current concurrently or separate. If concurrently, these services should be procured immediately, and staff recommend having Mayhew acquire these services in addition to the Five Hereon renovation design. Advantages are time and better coordination and collaboration of design plans and permitting. An architectural cost estimate would be reported back to council. At this time, staff are recommending that both the renovation and connecting link condition be done concurrently. Mayhew has provided an estimate of $85,000 for consulting design fees for the Five Hereon renovation. That, that $85,000 is further broken down in the report for interior design and engineering fees. The architectural fees for the design of the connecting link are not known at this time. These, however, these fees can be 8% of project costs, which at 600,000 for the connecting link addition would be approximately $50,000. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And thanks, John. Questions for John on this report? Or comments? Counselor McKenzie?
Got a comment. It's basically three words. Good or done?
Okay, other comments? Counselor Wilhelm?
I agree with Counselor McKenzie, and we should do them both together.
Other comments? Not seeing any hands go up. Well, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the five-year street renovation and expansion report. Perth County Council directs staff to single-source Mayhew for the design plan process to renovate the building at Five Year Street and acquire architectural services for the connecting link addition. Let's read what's in front of me. You have a look in your face, Bob. You have a comment?
Nope.
So Bob, Counselor Wilhelm's gonna move it, and the second, I have Counselor McKenzie over here. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor? That's carried. Perfect. Very good. Then we get moving on. So you got the...
I would just like to make one comment here. I like John's view there this morning. I hope it isn't too windy or wet up there, but it looks like it's hot around the stores.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody at work.
No traffic moving.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Thanks, John. Counsel reports. Not seeing any bylaws. I have bylaw 3845-2021 being a bylaw read the first, second, and third time and finally passed the second day of December 2021, and that is referring to the speed limits in Shakespeare. Moved by Counselor Hurley, seconded by Deputy Warden Eggers. Those in favor? That's carried. Moving on, we have bylaw 3846-2021 be read a first, second, third time and finally pass the second day of December 2021, and that is the boundary agreement with county of Oxford. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Actually, I think Matt Duncan, I missed his hand, so I'm gonna go to Matt Duncan as the second on that. Time I get across the screen, I sometimes miss the first hands going up. Okay, those in favor of that motion? Carried. Notice of motions. Other business? I stole Walters.
Yep.
Anyone have anything for other business? Any announcements? Not seeing any. I have, we have a closed session in accordance with section 239 of Municipal Act pertaining to a legal matter pertaining to labor relations, legislative services, and a matter pertaining to labor relations HR, and we want to move into closed session at 11:27. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor? That's carried. We're in closed session. Just bringing up a bylaw for the deal with the clerk and the deputy clerk position. And that is gonna be the Sean McCoy Legislative Coordinator be appointed as the deputy clerk for Perth County, and the bylaw 3848-2021 be read a first, second, and third time and finally pass the second day of December 2021. I think that's pretty straightforward, so we can stop this. Yep, and Deputy Warden Eggers, you're moving that, and do I have a seconder? That'll be Counselor I. Those in favor? That's carried. Now we're moving on to the vaccination policy. Does somebody want to word be? Probably would like that stated. Lauren?
Through the warden, so we'd be asking council to approve vaccination policy with the update and the procedures to show twice-a-week testing for non-union staff.
For non-union staff, and as part of that, do you want included the bylaw to come back for, to include council?
We, we can do that with it, or we can do that separate. It's council's desire.
What would you like?
Do it together.
Do it together.
So it would, it would include that then?
Okay, so it's gonna include that. The third thing I'm gonna ask, because I've heard it a couple times, do you want new staff to be double vaccinated? New staff hires, whatever the health unit recommends.
The health unit recommends based on legal advice, so I would leave it to council to direct us either way.
What's council's wishes? Speak now. I think Counselor Hurley?
No, thank you for chiming in there. I have great concerns around legal here. In the sling, we're potentially putting ourselves in, and we need to be mindful of who pays the bills for here, respectfully. There's law to this country, law to how we roll, and we need legal here on this going forward before we start deciding what vaccinations someone has to have before it can work here, for structure around that. Thank you.
Okay, I'm actually gonna slightly deviate here. We're gonna pass a motion to accept the policy to include two-time testing.
And the council bylaw.
And the council bylaw.
To bring the council bylaw.
To bring the council bylaw back to council. Deal with that, and then we're gonna deal with the new hires separate.
Okay. I'll move that.
Okay, so Deputy Warden Eggers is gonna move it. Counselor Wilhelm's gonna second, and that is to twice-a-week testing and a bylaw to come back to deal with council only. Everybody's got that? Those in favor? Anybody got any questions? Those in favor? That's carried. Okay, second, new hires. I need some direction here. Counselor McKenzie?
Well, I would, I don't know how you want to work, but I would say hires should be double vaccinated or whatever the recommendation of the health unit is. You know, we're talking You know, we're talking double vaccination now and maybe a booster shot, but we want double vaccinated when we hire them.
Think you'll struggle on the booster shop?
Yeah.
Because if you're not over 70, you're not even getting it.
Well, exactly, so you know, we're not going to hire too many people over 70 anyways, and I'll think right now.
Holy backs, careful.
Sorry.
Um, I, like Counselor Herlick, I'd like to hear from our legal department on the legal aspects of this before I'd be comfortable voting on any restrictions on our hiring.
Okay, so has anybody got a problem if I get an ad to bring back a report on new hires? And along with Marion? And then you'll have your questions answered one way or the other, Counselor Wilhelm?
I don't have a problem with that. I like that idea. The other thing I would like to add is, are we, I guess, condensing our pool of potential employees on the road? And so what kind of ramifications that may have also?
I'll guarantee you're condensing your pool.
Yeah, for sure.
Just ask any long-term care facility EMS provider, et cetera, et cetera. Am I not correct there, Mike?
Surgeons.
To the warden on the spot. Yeah, I mean, you know, HR is issued from healthcare across the spectrum right now, and the matter at hand, I mean, is certainly impacting, you know, the workplace, for sure.
At most places, I don't, the hired people, the pool is available that's unvaccinated because they aren't working where they used to be. Anyway, so we're going to bring back a report on the legal ramifications and whatnot on new hires.
As well as the condense, how that.
And as well as how it's condensing the availability of the workforce, but I'm not sure you'll be able to answer those questions, to be honest with you.
That's still to be.
I think that's pretty well still up in the air. So do I have a mover in a second or for that? Counselor Wilhelm, Counselor Duncan. Last chance for comments. Those in favor? That's carried. Okay, so what else we got to do here? We're up in closed session. Confirmatory bylaw. Confirmatory bylaw 38472021 to confirm the proceedings of council of the Corporation of the County of Perth that's regular meeting held December 2, 2021 is ready first, second, and third time and finally passed December 2, 2021. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor Duncan. Those in favor? That's carried. Motion to adjourn at 12:11. Moved by Counselor Hurley, and seconded by Counselor I. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you.